Hello, good evening everyone. Thank you for joining us at today's policy board. Before the meeting starts, I have a few announcements to make. So in terms of our emergency evacuation procedures, in the case of a fire, a bell will ring continuously. If this occurs, please leave the building immediately following the green fire exit signs out to the assembly point, which is by the War Memorial on Duke Street. If anyone requires assistance, please do let me know. The lift should not be used. Please remain at the assembly point and do not attempt to return into the building until you've been advised that it is safe to do so. Regarding our facilities in the building, the toilets are situated on the landing at the top of the main staircase and on the ground floor in the customer services centre. This meeting is filmed, so anyone attending this meeting is entitled to film it, but I should point out that only the councillors, officers and anyone sitting around these tables may be filmed. Members of the public should not be filmed, so please ensure that cameras are pointed only in this direction. This meeting is also being broadcast via YouTube and recorded. When speaking, can I please remind you to turn on your microphone and speak closely into it. A red light will appear on the middle button to indicate that your microphone is switched on. When you finish speaking, please do remember to turn off your microphone again. I'm almost there. I would also like to remind members of the board at this point of the meeting that a final decision is required tonight on the items on the agenda, and these cannot be deferred irrespective of the amount of time it might take tonight. So, Dan, could I please ask if we've got any apologies or substitutions?
Thank you Chair, I've had apologies from councillors Paul Clark and Whitehead, and we've got councillor Davis and Scott as their substitutes.
Brilliant, thank you very much. And is there anybody on the board that has any interests they would like to declare at this point? Okay, thank you. Can we please review the minutes of the last meeting, which was the 7th of November, and agree these if there are no changes? Agreed? We've received six questions in from members of the public. These had to be submitted by 7pm on Wednesday and were published on the agenda page this morning and circulated to board members who will have had the opportunity to read them ahead of the meeting. I'll invite you to ask your questions in the order they were submitted, and if the member of the public is not present, their question will be taken as read by the board. I understand that Jeremy Potter will respond to the questions within the presentation for item five rather than after each question. So I believe there's just one person who is attending today to ask their question. A Mr Parker? Lovely, thank you very much.
Right. I feel the council have based all their reasoning for not allocating my Brownfield site at Chatham Green for eight to ten dwellings on two extremely large Greenfield sites put forward situated close by for 3,000 dwellings. My site has not even been mentioned in the pre-submission consultation document regarding housing or employment uses. I find it concerning that the council is ignoring small sustainable Brownfield sites in favour of Greenfield sites. What's happened about the Brownfield First policy? At a recent appeal decision for one dwelling on my site, the appeal inspector said there would be an economic, social and environmental benefit and gave it modest weight. He didn't dispute the good frequency bus service next to my site on the A131, even though the council keep referring to it as limited. He said my appeal site may well be closer to services and facilities than existing homes within the defined settlement boundary of Chatham Green and other developments in the rural parts of the council's area. The council is aware of this. Regarding being tested, Chatham Green performs better than many other villages, including Great Lees, Bicknaker and even Hammond's Farm, in the Essex Highway Sustainable Accessibility Mapping appraisal document. Because Chatham Green has been included with Howe Green and Retting Common, which score badly, the overall score goes down drastically. I did highlight this concern to the council and was assured that three villages will not be assessed as one group of locations combined together, which unfortunately doesn't seem to be the case. Finally, Chatham Green's settlement boundary was drastically reduced in size in 2010. It previously included the Windmill pub and three dwellings next to the village green. If the boundary was reinstated to include these properties, which going by the latest settlement boundary review criteria should be included, as they are part of the main built-up extent of the settlement, then it would also mean my Brownfield site, Ponside Nursery and Yard, still close to the main settlement and being opposite the village green, would also be included under Part Two and Part Three of the Settlement Boundary Review Table. Can I please ask councillors and planners to review the boundary and my site before this goes to consultation in February and make the necessary changes, please? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Parker. As I said before, Jeremy Potter will be going through the answers to all of these questions, the ones that have been read and unread, as you go through the local plans, so ready whenever you are.
Thank you very much Chair, and good evening everyone. I'm Jeremy Potter, I'm the Spatial Planning Services Manager at City Council. So we have a presentation, and as the Chair said, we will be addressing Mr Parker's question statement alongside the other statements that were submitted, and questions that were submitted in time and have been published on the council's website. So I'll just let our visitors come and sit down, if that's okay. So, shall I just wait one second? So thank you very much, and welcome new arrivals. So essentially, the purpose of the report that's before you, board, is to effectively approve the Regulation 19 Pre- Submission Local Plan for another public consultation. And this is the third public consultation that the review of the local plan has been subject to, and we are endeavouring to, we're planning to start that consultation for six weeks on the 4th of February. The recommendations, and we will go through that on the final slide, but the recommendations first seek to get approval from the board to proceed with the plan under the transitional arrangements that have been published by the government in the MPPF in December, and also to consider and approve the feedback document that has been updated and is appended to the item. There's also an approach and recommendation to endorse the proposed approach to the consultation that we are undertaking. So also, I just need to draw members' attention to the green sheet. There has been a green sheet published as part of this agenda, and that green sheet just sets out a couple of admissions where essentially Sandon Parish Council was omitted from some of the references within the documentation, as the four councils, parish councils, that were involved in a campaign in terms of the comments that were made to the preferred options document. And also, it includes some plans on an alternative access to the site at Bicknaker 1C, which addresses one of the questions that was put forward as part of tonight's agenda. So I'm hoping, sometimes this seems to freeze for one moment or another, although I'm not absolutely sure why, but if you can just bear with one second and... So, as I said before, we're on that third stage, and this is the last stage, the last formal stage, before the plan is submitted for independent examination. So you can see that over the last couple of years, there's been two previous stages of consultation, one at issues and options, one at preferred options last year, and this is the current stage, which is called pre-submission. And this stage of the plan is effectively the stage of the plan which sets out our final, the council's final draft plan for consultation before it's submitted to government via the Planning Inspectorate for it to be independently examined. We set out later on in the presentation the steps after this stage, but I thought it was just important to just get that context where we are and where we've been. So first of all, one of the recommendations that is on your agenda tonight on this item is essentially the transitional arrangements that local planning policy has set up. There we go. And one of the main changes that has happened through the revised National Planning Policy Framework that was published in December is the changes to the housing numbers. So you'll see, and this is set out in the report, but effectively there has been a significant change from the adopted local plan to the National Planning Policy Framework that was adopted in December by government, so the standard method formula that derives the local housing need for every council area across the country. And what you can see there is that our adopted local plan has 805 homes per year. The December 2024 plan has a number of 1,454 homes per year. And then the second table sets out how those housing numbers have been accommodated in the review of the local plan as we've gone forward. So effectively, the preferred options plan that we consulted on last year had a housing requirement of 1,000 homes a year, but it had a 19% buffer. This stage, we're proposing a housing requirement of 1,210 homes a year, and I'll come on to the reason behind that in a moment, in terms of the transitional arrangements. And that shows effectively that we are 83% of the number that was published in December 2024, so 1,210 is 83% of the 1,454 number that was published by the government. And the transitional arrangements effectively set out that you can continue, the government is saying to us that you continue plan making if you've met two criteria. One of the criteria is that your housing number is at least 80% of the new housing number, the standard method that was published in December, and ours is, that's 83%, and also you need to reach Regulation 19 stage, which is the stage we're at now, before the 12th of March. And they're the two criteria that the government have set out for local authorities that are well advanced with their local plan to proceed under the existing arrangements, rather than stopping and having to start again under the new arrangements that are coming forward in the 2024 MPPF. So I think it's just worth pointing out what are the potential consequences of not using the transitional arrangements. And as I said before, we would need to effectively redo at least one stage of preparation of the review of the plan, possibly two. It's possible that that would effectively set us back about 18 months in the review of the plan, and that would have a particular impact in terms of considerable delay and cost. We would have to recommission much of our evidence base because that is based on the housing numbers that we've been talking about, rather than the new housing number that came through in December. And also, as it says on there, we would have to accommodate 100% of that new number. So that means about 4,600 more homes than are within the plan that's before you tonight. So that's finding effectively another large strategic site. Our existing local plan will be out of date on the 28th of May. That does mean that we won't have a five-year land supply. So if we carry on and not use the transitional arrangements, we don't stop the clock and effectively we don't have a five-year land supply, and that does lead the council open to unplanned and speculative planning applications for housing across our area. And also, I think it's fair to say that the planning applications are likely to be submitted on the sites that are within our plan as well, in addition to sites that are potential admission sites that aren't within the plan. So I think there are some significant issues in relation to not using the transitional arrangements, and I think one of those comments, I don't know the full name, but Mr C was the questioner that was talking about a couple of sites for specialist residential accommodation, and talking about whether we should be holding back and not using the transitional arrangements. I think these are some of the key matters that would be in response to that question in relation to essentially pausing and using the new standard method rather than continuing through the transitional arrangements. So that's the first key element in terms of progression, it's using the transitional arrangements that are available to us. Now Claire's going to go through the actual content of the local plan, if I can get this to work. There we go. Oh, it's done by magic behind me. So hopefully, we can just go through the slides now that we've set out some of the changes and some of the matters that have come forward through the pre-submission plan. Thank you Claire.
Thank you Jeremy. Good evening Chair and members. Before discussing the contents of the pre-submission plan, just wanted to quickly recap on the main headlines from the Preferred Options consultation, which was held in the summer last year. So we had almost 10,500 responses received from 3,678 different respondents. This included residents, developers and statutory bodies such as Natural England and the Environment Agency. An overview of the key issues raised in the responses is set out in the You Said We Did Feedback Report, attached to Appendix One of your covering report. And overall, most government and national bodies either supported the plan outright or offered some qualified support. There was a mix of support and objection from many town and parish councils. Often, they were suggesting changes to the plan, and these ranged from minor modifications to calls for the deletion of some sites. Most public comments did object to the plan or one or more aspects of it, although there was some limited support as well. Hammond's Farm and Junction 18 of the A12, strategic sites 16A and 16B, they received a really large, high level of public objections with an organised campaign established by the local councils' coordinating responses that Jeremy alluded to. Many developers and landowners, they supported development where it was proposed on their sites. Others, however, did reject, did object where the plan didn't allocate specific sites or land, and there were also calls for a review of the Green Belt and the Green Wedge. But all the comments have been reviewed, and they have been used to inform the pre-submission plan being considered this evening. So the pre-submission plan, it's been formulated following a whole host of additional work, which includes consideration of the latest development requirements, newly completed evidence-based work, a consideration of the latest national planning policy and guidance. We've also had discussions with service providers and duty cooperate bodies, as well as analysing the preferred options consultation responses. The plan is attached to Appendix Two of your covering report, and it is an edited and updated version of the preferred options plan, with the same look and feel. It represents the final version of the plan that the council intends to submit for examination and ultimately adopt as a council's statutory development plan. Following the last consultation, the whole plan has been reviewed, and a significant number of changes and improvements have been made, and the key ones are described in Section Four of your covering report, Appendix One of your covering report, and summarised on the next few slides. So the strategic policies provide the core principles for which new developments are expected to meet. S4 is the overarching policy for conserving and enhancing the natural environment. This has been strengthened to incorporate new requirements, including for developments to maximise opportunities to enhance natural habitats. But we have actually removed one requirement, this is in relation to collecting contributions for mitigating impacts on Hatfield Forest, site of special scientific interest, because following the representation from Natural England, they've confirmed that that is no longer a requirement for developments within our city council area. Strategic Policy S6 outlines housing and employment requirements over the plan period, and S7 presents a spatial strategy. These have also been updated to respond to preferred options comments and to reflect the latest information, including the housing requirements in line with the transitional arrangements that Jeremy mentioned, and increased travelling show people plot requirements to reflect the final gypsy and traveller accommodation assessment. The need to meet the 1,210 new dwellings per annum in the plan is going to be met by reducing the supply buffer from 19% in the preferred options local plan to 1.5% by using all of the plan allocations to meet the new minimum housing requirement. This is with the exception of some deleted sites from the plan because they are now built out or no longer available or suitable. The plan also intends to meet the 1,210 new dwellings by increasing the windfall allowance from 100 to 175 dwellings per annum, as an analysis of past trends demonstrates that there's a strong track record of this amount of windfall sites being delivered. The pre-submission plan also allocates a new site, this is at Andrews Place, west of Rainsford Lane, for 183 net new homes. This site's being actively promoted by Chelma Housing Partnership for redevelopment and will be deliverable within the plan period. The plan also increases the capacity of some sites within the plan, including Meadow Shopping Centre allocation, which has risen from 350 to 757 net new homes, in line with more recent information, including that submitted with the planning application. Moving on. So Strategic Policy S9, this covers infrastructure requirements. This has also been strengthened to include additional requirements on developments, including to contribute towards recreational pressures on sites of scientific interest, and also to provide cemetery space, again in response to the consultation responses and the updated plan evidence base. In relation to site allocation policies, various changes and improvements have been made, again in response to the consultation, the evidence base, but also to improve their clarity and effectiveness in terms of decision-making in the future. So examples of changes include new safeguarding access requirements for maintaining water drainage infrastructure in direct response to comments from Anglian Water. You'll see on the screen as well, there's also new requirements to provide financial contributions towards police facilities on housing sites, following comments from Essex Police. There have been a limited number of deletions of requirements from site policies, the notable one is the removal of the need to contribute towards the dueling of the Chelmsford North East bypass, as this cannot be justified by the evidence base at this point in time. Now we know that Hammond's Farm attracted the most significant level of opposition, so a range of further work has been undertaken to assess the impacts of the site, to test its suitability for development, and to help identify ways to mitigate adverse impacts. This has included further traffic modelling, an updated strategic flood risk assessment, and a new archaeological assessment. And overall, all this work demonstrates that the site remains suitable and sustainable, and as such is retained within the pre-submission plan. That said, the site allocation policy has been changed and strengthened where appropriate and where possible to help address community and stakeholder concerns raised, and any suggestions in the responses for its improvement. So this includes, as shown on the screen, a new landscape, open space and recreation notation to ensure that heritage assets are protected and to provide new green space on site. We've also deleted a parcel of development land close to Junction 19 of the A12 due to concerns about heritage impacts and detachment from the rest of the main site. We've reduced the overall development area in response to flooding concerns to exclude any areas of high-risk flood risk, and there are also new requirements on the development to provide acoustic screening to the A12. And this on the screen shows the Hammond's Farm site notations as illustrated on the Policies map. Another change to note is the extension of Chelmsford urban area notation around the site, because once it's developed, it will form part of the built-up area of Chelmsford. The country park boundary has also been reduced to exclude an area in the north, as this is no longer available for this use, however, as I've said, additional green space is now allocated. In terms of main changes to the development management policies, these are the policies which set out general criteria used to determine planning applications. The main changes relate to reducing water stress and responding to recommendations in the evidence base. So for example, you'll notice a new lower water efficiency target of 90 litres per person per day compared with 110 litres per person per day in the preferred options plan. Again, all of the changes are designed to strengthen and improve and refine the plan. The Policies map, this allocates sites for development or protection. Key amendments include updated housing site allocations, including removing, deleting built-out sites, and adding the new housing site, Andrews Place, that I just mentioned. We've also added site boundaries for the small-scale residential development allocations in Bicknaker, Ford End and East Hanningfield, as members might recall that these were shown as a symbol on the preferred options Policies map. We've also got updated open space notations, new boundaries for local neighbourhood centres, and we've expanded the special policy area for ARU Rital to reflect the new and improved facilities that will be required to support the university over the plan period. Before I move on to the next slide, I will address the points from Mr C in question two. I will address the points from Mr C in question 2. So, the review plan process has considered a range of alternative spatial strategies and different housing sites. Development growth in the Green Belt has been discounted as there's sufficient and suitable land available outside the Green Belt to meet our development needs sustainably. There's no requirement for the council to consider the release of grey belt land under the transitional arrangements, and the plan provides a mix of different size types and sizes of sites, so it's not considered overly reliant on large strategic sites. It also makes provision for specialist residential development through specific allocation at Great Lees. Requirements to provide specialist residential provision on sites over 100 units, and in addition, on greenfield sites over 500 units, 10% of the market housing is required to provide provision for housing for older people. And all these interventions together mean that the need for specialist residential accommodation in the plan over the plan period can be met without the need to change Green Belt boundaries. On Mr C's point regarding plan objections, I'd reiterate that the council acknowledged significant levels of opposition were received to some aspects of the preferred options plan, including Hammond's Farm, and that the consultation responses have been used to make changes and refine the plan. In respect to the level of objection to the pre-submission plan, this is obviously unknown at this point in time until the document is published for consultation. Just staying on site allocations and picking up the questions 1, 3 and 6 for Mrs B, Mrs C and Mr C, these relate to site growth area 11C, land west of Barbrook Way, Bicknaker. So, this is allocated for a small scale of residential development, as illustrated by the red line site boundary shown on this plan, with the policy requiring vehicular access via Barbrook Way to the south. We had objections to this site at preferred option stage, with many raising concerns that a ransom strip exists, making it inaccessible from Barbrook Way. Following a letter from the site promoter, Welbeck Strategic Land Limited, the council is confident still that the strip of land at the end of Barbrook Way won't prevent access into the development site. The letter from the site promoter is set out in Appendix 4 of the You Said We Did feedback report. This refers to a Section 38 agreement, which relates to the original legal agreement to build the roads for the Barbrook Way Thriftwood Estate. The letter also refers to two plans showing an alternative access. These were omitted from the You Said We Did report to avoid confusion, as they proposed to serve a significantly larger site for between 160 and 250 homes, and this alternative site access would lead to a long road from the north across two fields, which would be less than ideal. But following the question for Mrs B for completeness, we do propose to include the plans in the final published version of the You Said We Did report, as shown on the green sheet. Mr C's question concerns the Strategic Housing and Employment Land Availability Assessment, or SHELA, rating for the site. A revised SHELA was presented to this board in November, and the covering report sets out that prior to commencement of the November 24 assessment, some minor changes to the criteria had been applied. As a result, the capped local constraint of amber no longer applies to the suitability rating in the November 24 assessment output for the Barbrook Way site. And the latest SHELA documents are published on the website for Mr C's information. Okay, so let's move on to talk a little bit more about the evidence base. So, the pre-submission plan is informed by a wide range of studies, information and documents. These are published on our website and described further in Section 6 of your covering report. They include those on the screen, so an open space archaeology and air quality assessments, viability assessment, updated infrastructure delivery plan, and updated heritage impact assessment. They also include an updated transport impact assessment. We know that many of the preferred options comments, especially from parish and town councils and residents, raise concerns about traffic impacts associated with the plan. The headline conclusions from the latest impact assessment are on the screen and include that overall the traffic impacts will be largely limited to the A12 and its junctions, and to a lesser extent, other corridors. The impact from the plan proposals is likely to have a minor impact along the A12 relative to background growth. However, junctions 18 at Sandon and 19 at Borum will need improvements. The improvements to Borum interchange proposed by National Highways will also be required as a minimum to accommodate growth in the plan. However, overall, the impact of the plan on the strategic highway network should not be considered severe. This is what it concludes. And this is really important because it is a key test for the plan to satisfy in accordance with the National Planning Policy Framework. The pre-submission plan has also been informed by the evidence base in the form of the Integrated Impact Assessment, or IIA for short. This assesses the plan against a range of social, environmental and economic health and equality indicators, and helps us to ensure that the plan is promoting sustainable development. The key findings on the screen are also summarised in Section 5 of your covering report. Overall, it finds that the spatial strategy performs as well as or better than reasonable alternatives tested, and will focus new housing and employment growth to the most sustainable locations. It also concludes the plan will have no adverse effects on the integrity of any European sites, and suggests that policies will help to secure development that will contribute to a range of positive health inequality effects. The IIA will be published alongside the pre-submission plan for consultation. Moving now to the consultation. A comprehensive programme of consultation is proposed. Will run for six weeks, a statutory period, from the 4th of February to the 18th of March. It will go beyond minimum requirements of legislation and the council's adopted statement of community involvement, as described in the consultation plan attached to Appendix 4 of your covering report. Now, as this is the Regulation 19 stage, there is a formal method of responding that's required by the planning inspector. Unlike the previous issues and options and preferred options consultations, we are required to ask specific questions on whether the plan is sound and legally compliant, and these are in line with national policy. Representation should answer the consultation questions based on a model representation form and guidance notes published by the planning inspector. This is strongly recommended as it will help ensure that all comments which are sent in full to the planning inspector are related to matters relevant to the examination. One thing to note, members, is that at examination, the inspector will give the same weight to an issue, whether it appears in hundreds of responses or only in one. As such, in their guidance, the planning inspector encourage respondents sharing common views to make a single representation rather than separate representations repeating the same points. Both the representation form and detailed guidance notes will be published alongside the consultation when it is launched next month. This slide shows the forward plan for the rest of the local plan review process. So, following the consultation, the responses will be processed and reviewed before a summary of the main issues raised is presented back to this board, and that's likely to take place in the summer. Approval will then be sought from the council, probably around autumn time, to submit the plan for examination. The inspector will then set the timetable for the examination, including the hearing sessions before preparing a report with their findings. Now, if this report concludes that the plan is sound, it can then be adopted by the council, and we anticipate that that is likely to be at some point in 2026. Before I conclude and move to the recommendations, I'll respond to question 4 from Mr P. In relation to site selection, the council has allocated new small sites at appropriate key service and service settlements. Small settlements of which Chatham Green is one sit below these in the settlement hierarchy, as typically they have the least services and facilities, and are therefore considered the least sustainable for new development. The spatial strategy directs development to the most sustainable locations, and over 3,000 homes in the plan are proposed on Brownfield sites. In addition, the housing trajectory includes over 200 small housing sites of less than one hectare that cumulatively provide nearly 1,600 new homes. Not every individual site is mentioned in the plan, as there are over 300 sites submitted by landowners to the SHELA Strategic Housing and Employment Land Availability Assessment. On the transport evidence base issue, the Sustainable Accessibility Mapping and Appraisal is one of many pieces of evidence to inform the plan and the spatial strategy set out in the pre-submission plan and cannot and should not be viewed in isolation. Its purpose was to inform the council of the most sustainably accessible settlement areas based predominantly on existing characteristics and infrastructure provision. The appraisal assessed the five spatial strategy approaches in the Issues and Options Consultation Document, which included Chatham Green under Approach D. It also assessed settlements individually, including again Chatham Green, as set out in the appendices. In respect to Chatham Green-defined settlement boundary, the council has carried out a review of defined settlement boundaries to inform the plan. The methodology allows for the inclusion of the main built-up part of settlements, so such as groups of housing and their gardens. The pub and dwellings referred to by Mr P are separate from the tight-built form of Chatham Green by a field of approximately 30 metres wide. Mr P's site is also approximately 200 metres away from the settlement boundary, and as such is excluded as it's considered isolated development more related to the countryside. Therefore, the proposed defined settlement boundary for the village is considered appropriate in the plan, supported by the plan evidence base as well. So, in conclusion, Chair and members, work on the preparation of the review plan has now reached the stage where the council can embark on the third and final formal stage of public consultation. This will enable the council to take advantage of the transitional arrangements for plan-making in the new 2024 National Planning Policy Framework, and officers intend to ensure that the consultation is widely publicised, and information on how to submit comments at this technical stage is clearly set out. Thank you, Chair. Now refer you to the recommendations on page 1 of your covering report, and on the separate green sheet, and on the screen. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. Of course you can...
Thank you. Just one extra matter. I think that the question from, I think this was the second Mr P, in relation to financial contributions or the changes in relation to Essex County Council education provision. And that change within the plan relates to comments from Essex County Council, and we have amended the wording within a number of the site policies to just clarify that financial contributions to early years primary and secondary education provision, as required by the local education authorities, the wording. So, there was a specific question that's just asked that question about what has changed, and that is it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to open up the floor for any comments or questions from members. councillor Scott.
Thank you, Chair. Okay, it appears you are rushing your fences purely because of this transitional rules, the time and timetable. I'm going to ask, how can you proceed with the current proposal when proper consideration of future growth at Morden and Haybridge is not fully factored in? As there has not been proper consultation at an earlier stage with Morden? And when the certainty of funding from future enhancement at Borum interchange is not there, so that its capacity is not assured? And when the planning application for consideration of the commercial development south of the A414 is still under consideration? Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Thank you, councillor Scott. So, I suppose what I first say is that we started work on the local plan in 2021. So, there has been three years of preparation of the plan. So, I wouldn't agree necessarily that it's been rushed as a document. As it was set out in the presentation, there are really significant implications of stopping the local plan, and not least, having to deal with an extra 4,600 homes and not having a five-year land supply in May. So, I would say that it's actually really prudent that the council takes this opportunity to use those transitional arrangements and progresses with the recommendation that is before you on the agenda. Coming on to that second point about duty to cooperate at Morden, there is a duty to cooperate process, and officers and members have been involved in that throughout the plan preparation. So, we speak to our neighbours. There's been a continuous engagement with Morden officers on the development of both their plan and our plan. And from the outset, Morden has made representations at every formal stage of consultation on this plan that's before you tonight. And also, we have signed a statement of common ground with Morden council, and that is available on our website, and that does confirm that there are no areas without agreement or there are no unresolved strategic matters that Morden council have, and has been published, as I say, on our website. Taking the point, and I think probably the wider point, about traffic modelling and the impacts that comes from Morden. The traffic modelling that's contained within the transport assessment, again, is published on our evidence base, the latest iteration of that, has a whole section about cross-boundary traffic impact, and actually within the forecasting uses forecasted flows from every one of our neighbours in the baseline of the traffic surveys and modelling that's been undertaken. So, again, I wouldn't, I would say that our evidence is actually using that forecast from our neighbours to plug into the work that's happened on assessing the impact of the local plan sites. In relation to the funding announcement on the A12, members be aware that the Junction 19, there are some significant improvements to the Borum interchange as part of the A12 widening scheme, the DCO scheme. That, at the moment, has got planning permission and was funded. It's still in a group of schemes that are being considered by the government for funding. But I think, in part, not to proceed with the local plan would mean that that funding is unlikely to arrive. is unlikely to arise, because government are looking for areas that are funding for roads that are needed to support future housing growth. So, there is a chicken and egg situation there, that if councils stop planning, then they're much less likely to get money for strategic infrastructure from the government. So, in effect, we wouldn't have a situation where we would justify, the justification of the funding would necessarily follow from the A12 announcement, and we're waiting for that to come forwards in the early part of this year. We're expecting that announcement to happen. In relation to the employment side, I mean, we would always want to wait for a planning application for the local plan to be considered first, rather than a planning application being considered first. We're a plan-led authority, we want the plan to lead where the principle of development is, not planning applications to do that. So, in some respects, because a planning application has been submitted for the employment development on 16B, that isn't a reason to stop planning, that's a reason to carry on the local plan, because we want to make sure that the local plan sets the principles, not planning applications. So, the principle for development of this site, 16B, lies with the local plan, not with the planning application. I think that's probably the points that, in response to councillor Scott's questions. Thank you.
I think that was a really helpful and concise explanation. I can see that you have a follow-up question. If you could keep it brief, is it clarifying something?
Jeremy, I appreciate all that you've said, but with the widening that you're talking about, if just, if the building starts with Hammond's Farm, with the houses, and with 16A and 16B, when all of this building starts, if there is no 100% evidence that the widening of any of these motorways, any of them, are going to actually take place, there's going to be absolute chaos, and this is out of the concern of most of our residents. This is because, at the moment, we're having problems as it is, so we're talking about the four parish councils in particular, Little Badde, Danbury and Sandon. When you're coming along and trying to get into Morden, it's pretty difficult. So, if anything goes awry, what will happen then if the process of a house building has already begun? Thank you.
Thank you. I'm not sure that was clarifying your original question, but I'm happy to have this one answered.
Okay, thank you. So, first of all, the promoters of 16A and 16B will need to mitigate their own impact, so they will need to do significant improvements to junction 18 and junction 19 of the A12. So, in that regard, there will need to be a transport assessment undertaken for those planning applications, which will need to mitigate their impact. In the strategic sense, the DCO is important, and the improvements to junction 19 are important to our growth, but it's not that dissimilar to where we were with our local plan last time around, where we were in with a housing infrastructure fund bid for the North East Bypass and the railway station, that weren't confirmed at the point that we submitted the plan, but actually cemented this council's ambition, and in part, I would say, had a big part to play for actually us securing that money. Ambitious local authorities get government money, timid ones don't, I'm afraid. So, in some regards, what I would say is that the applications would need to mitigate their own impact, and us making a commitment to the growth that's in our local plan ensures that we are certainly on the government's radar for when these decisions are finally made, and these decisions will be made in the next couple of months.
Thank you.
Thank you. councillor Japes.
As clearly, the plan involves building over a beautiful greenfield site, which is much treasured by local people, thus the kickback you've had from Hammond's Farm Group. I'm a little bit concerned in, I'll refer to 4.31, there will be a requirement of a 20% biodiversity net gain, I'm not quite sure how you do that, but I accept that that's what's been said, over the site unless site constraints indicate otherwise, which seems to me to say, if you can do it, you can, if you can't, we don't require the net gain of biodiversity. Now, I believe there is a minimum of 10%. We've put 20%, does that mean 10% absolutely, or 20% if you can, or if you can, and if you can't, you don't do it? Just a concern really about what's being lost forever, and what we're intending to do to protect it. Thank you very much, Chair.
Thank you, thank you. So, in relation to biodiversity net gain, you're right, the 10% is a national requirement, so we, all sites from a certain date, all qualified sites from a certain date have to achieve 10% biodiversity net gain. We feel that the garden communities, both garden communities, this North Chelmsford and the East Chelmsford Hammond's Farm garden community, have, because of their scale and because of their importance, should be going beyond that, and 20% is our target for that, for biodiversity net gain. The reason why there is, I suppose, what you'd say is a slight caveat, is that until that work is done to undertake what the uplifts are, it's difficult to actually nail that down until that fine-grained work is undertaken. However, it's my understanding that both garden communities are committing to the 20% biodiversity net gain. So, that will go through the master plans that you've seen on North Chelmsford, where there's a commitment to 20% biodiversity net gain, and there will be a subsequent master plan required for Hammond's Farm, whereby the council will be seeking the 20% biodiversity net gain enshrined in that master plan.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Is there a follow-on question? Are we, okay.
It is a follow-up question. How is that enforceable in terms of, once they've started to build and once it's in progress, how do we make sure that that happens?
So, our site policy that allocates the sites requires a master plan and requires all planning permissions and all applications to be in accordance with that master plan. So, effectively, we've got a policy that says 20%, we have a master plan that reconfirms that, and then planning applications will need to accord with that requirement.
In the same way, I suppose that they would need to demonstrate the 10%. councillor O'Brien.
So, as you'd expect, I'm not going to ask questions, I'm going to tell you what I think. First of all, I'm not going to question that the quality of the work is very good, the 1,800 pages, very good, very detailed, gave me everything. I just disagree with this whole local plan process. Let me give you some kind of feelings why. I joined my local council, Southwoodham Ferrars, 2016, just as we were starting the previous local plan process. 1,200 homes, 1224 homes in Southwoodham, 1,023 for Countryside and the remainder for Bellway. Countryside submitted a master plan, we went through the process, everybody on this council, from all sides, said it was a good master plan, have to agree. Countryside submitted a planning application two years ago, nothing's happened. The local plan has not delivered any houses in Southwoodham Ferrars. Bellway have submitted a recent planning application, because I hear that Countryside hadn't done theirs. There was no master plan for Bellway, so that kind of throws away this angle that the master plan comes first, because Bellway haven't actually done a master plan for their proportion of the site. So, it all comes down to planning applications. Southwoodham Ferrars has had no new homes, we did a local plan and we did a neighbourhood plan, which cost Southwoodham Town Council 78,000. We're not seeing the payback on that that we were expecting, because my sources from Countryside indicate the current site is no longer viable and needs a higher density. So, all this local planning that we do is actually making, really, no difference to what actually comes in on housing policies. Let's compare it, let's look at Morden now.
Sorry, councillor O'Brien, just before we move on to Morden, just so I'm clear, there isn't a question that's coming up, but you're sharing your views.
I'm sharing my view.
And I just wanted to make sure I understood, it's that you don't think the local plan process is a worthwhile endeavour?
As part of the overall view that I am explaining right now, Madam Chairman.
Okay, but you're happy with the way in which the council have engaged with this process?
There is nothing problem, I'm happy with what's been done.
But you're not happy, but this is a legal process that we need to follow regardless?
We can throw away the plan, we cannot approve it. You cannot turn around to us tonight and say, we have to approve this plan.
No, yes, if we can...
I don't know what we're arguing over here, what are you calling me out?
I'm not arguing at all, I just wanted to make sure I understood, because it wasn't a question, I wanted to make sure I understood your train of thought.
Absolutely. Let me carry on, and you might be able to explain it better. So, let's look at Morden. Morden had no local plan. It was called anarchy. Guess what? They built houses, they have gone up in the most popular places to live in the UK. They had very little resistance, and now they're getting some infrastructure. So, the whole local plan, to me, it has not delivered, and it probably will not deliver. Three years' time, we probably won't be here. None of us are going to be re-elected to this council if the devolution goes ahead, so we can throw away party politics, we can throw away, you know, doing what the party says, we can say what is right for the people of Chelmsford. Is this plan right? And by the amount of resistance that we've had to it, especially on the Hammond's Farm, my feeling, this plan is not right. It can't be right. And to summarise quite clearly, last year, the leader of this council, he's stood in this chamber, we don't just build homes, we build communities. He repeated those words, not so many words, a couple of months ago. Let me ask that, this question. How many existing, happy, well-formed, rounded communities? Borum, Hatfield-Peverill, Danbury, Sandon, Little Badde, and a bit of Great Badde, how many existing communities are we prepared to destroy and devastate in this process? I say, stop it now. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much, councillor O'Brien. Do I have any other members that would like to make a comment? Just in general, just, you're welcome to comment on councillor Puley.
Afterwards, is that having a rant can generate populist support? And I think the one specific thing that I would respond by saying is that the planning officers, by implication, he doesn't trust any of us councillors to put Chelmsford first, but my experience of the planning officers and other officers go out of their way to look at this from the point of view of Chelmsford's future and Chelmsford's wellbeing, and frankly, councillor O'Brien should apologise for those implications. Anyway, let me go on to what I want to say. Mr Potter's aware that I've had a couple of points which have been, we've exchanged views on over time, and I just need to understand where I go with those views now, since they're not totally, totally within the document as it now stands. I should preface that by saying I'm thoroughly in favour of this going out to consultation, I understand why, and I think it would be a grave mistake to anticipate, to anticipate things by scrapping the plan at this stage. And we've got to bear in mind that even if we carry on with the transitional arrangements, we've still got these larger housing requirements that we're going to be obliged to take. So, work is not going to stop in looking for additional sites, just because we've gone for these transitional arrangements. So, let's get on with it, by all means. The couple of things that I've been talking, Mr Potter and I have been talking about in the past, is first of all, the, some development plan policies, where I believe it's true to say that the feedback from the planning committee, when you asked us in the planning committee what we thought were problematic areas within the existing development policies. I know that my feedback said that we sometimes ran into difficulty between, differentiating between those policies which were policies, black and white, and other policies which were very clearly a matter of judgement. And I think that my hope was going to be that the existing development policies would be modified in some way to highlight where it was a matter of judgement, so there wasn't going to be this constant to and fro between the officers and the planners about whether we should or shouldn't look at things like the street scene, or the gap between houses, or whatever it is. So, I wonder where we go with those now, and that's all part of the process between now and the process between now and the submission document itself, I guess. And secondly, the same, the second comment that we have discussed is the Making Places document, and I thoroughly applaud, members will be aware that this was a supplementary piece of planning guidance, which we developed after the last local plan, which has helped guide some of the decisions that have been made since, but which was not enforceable planning policy. And this plan has enabled Jeremy and his colleagues to take in a number of those issues in the Making Places document, include them in this draft of the local plan. The one thing that disappoints me in that area, and again, I need guidance about where I go with this now, is the fact that the document, the planning, the plan as it now stands, where it relates to building height, does not reflect and does not refer to the height guidance that was included in the Making Places document, which gave local residents an awful lot of comfort when they were able to look at the Making Places document and said, this area that we are in, or that area of Chelmsford, has this strong guidance that heights should be in this sort of area. So, I guess the general point is, where do we go with things that we'd still like to discuss a bit? Can we do that? Or do we have to formally address these things at the inspector level?
Who would be best placed? Jeremy?
Thank you. So, I mean, the first matter, I suppose, it all comes down to whether planning, town planning, is an art or a science, and it's a bit of both, I'm afraid. And it's not like building control, where you're just determining whether something is specified and complies with a specification. There is planning judgement, there will always be planning judgement. There will be certain policies that says 30% or 110, or whatever the metric is, or, you know, you can't be within 10 metres, those sorts of things, there will be, but there is always planning judgement. And I think that's the reason why planning decisions are more complex than other decisions on more technical specifications, but getting the right balance is right, you know, and I agree. There needs to be an element of the decision-maker being able to use their discretion for the site-specific nature of the proposal that's before them. Otherwise, you get unintended consequences if, when you try to apply criteria-based policies to everything. In terms of the planning, Making Places SPD, we have incorporated, we share councillor Puley's views on this, and we've incorporated a lot of what was in the policy, in Making Places SPD, into policy on this new plan, which, again, is, you know, I've been welcomed across all of, many of the councillors. I believe that also, the tall buildings policy, which is the DM28, still refers to the Making Places SPD heights, and we will be reviewing the Making Places SPD. So, there is still a reference to the Making Places, I think it's at 989, paragraph 989. So, rest assured, we still refer from the policy to the Making Places SPDs on heights. No, not incorporated it, because we will review the Making Places SPD. Those types of judgements or those types of criteria are better placed within an SPD than within a policy.
Some light reading for you. I can see your question, I'm just going to finish with the board members, and then I'll come... come to you councillor. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you, madam chairman, very briefly, and I'm not going to rant, as well as building communities, I'm concerned that we're building urban islands. As somebody who lives in an urban island, I can say that modal change doesn't work, and the fact that we keep getting stuck in traffic coming into the city centre is a concern, I'm sceptical of modal change, but I'm concerned at constructing urban islands based on a premise that isn't going to work. Thank you.
Thank you, if you'd like to go on to that one.
I think we just need to look at possibly the evidence there in some respects, so Bealey's a good example, where monitoring has been undertaken of the modal shift that's happened there, and there has been a significant change from what was expected in terms of the business as usual compared to the amount of trips that are on buses and on active travel, and I think that's an example where if you have a local plan, and I suppose going to councillor O'Brien's point, if you don't have a local plan, you have no control, and because we had a local plan, we were able to ensure that the homes at Bealey, at Bealey and Bealey Park had travel plan arrangements whereby those householders got the free, a free season ticket to begin with, and that's another example of trying to encourage that behavioural change, without the policy and without the local plan, we wouldn't be having that. So, I would, I don't share the councillor's scepticism, I think if you get, get it right and you plan properly, then you can change behaviours.
If I could just come back briefly, we haven't been blessed with free season tickets down in South Wardenferres, and the busiest bus of the day was actually cancelled by the bus company arbitrarily, because they wanted to.
Yeah, I don't think Jeremy's able to address that point, but I recognise what you've said. Are there any more points that would like to be made, or I can go to councillor Armstrong?
Thank you, Chair. I'll talk quickly to keep it brief. I'd like to thank the officers for the hard work they have put into this plan, especially considering the last-minute curveballs and the very restricted resources you have to work with. I'm sure on balance, the local plan will be voted through to its next round of consultations, however, I hope we use this consultation time wisely to carry out some of the hard work that is required to get into the details. The wording of the local plan is heavily focused on the environment, however much of the planning work the council should be doing to protect the environment has been ignored, this local plan is recommending thousands of new homes across multiple sites all over Chelmsford that are within or immediately adjacent to conservation areas. Conservation areas are designed to protect and enhance the environment and our heritage. Conservation areas are meant to be regularly reviewed and have management plans that sets out how it can be conserved and enhanced. As the exception that proves the rule, the conservation area in stock has a management plan and has been reviewed in the last few years, as the parish council took the initiative to lead the review. It appears that the other 24 conservation areas have not been reviewed since long before I was born, most don't seem to have been amended since 1991, if they have been informally reviewed, it certainly has never led to any published management plans. This work and these documents matter, as how else would the important details be highlighted to allow sensitive and green plans to be produced? There is so much special about Chelmsford, and I'll just highlight one amazing example, so that at least one of them isn't missed, on the 14th of August 2023, very close to one of the preferred options, a young European honeybuzzer was seen taking an early test flight, that is the first evidence of this species breeding in the entire county since 1847. I'm not against any single development, however, I believe we should lead the development rather than be misled. My question is, can we consider providing the planning department with the resources to put in the hard work and provide the management plans for all the conservation areas prior to the final adoption of the local plan?
Thank you for your question and for coming tonight. Do we have a response to that specifically?
I can't really respond to the last one, I mean, I would always love more resources, so, but, I mean, in terms of conservation areas, councillor Armstrong is correct in the sense that they have been designated for a number of years and do require updating from time to time, and it does, it's quite a resource-intensive thing to undertake, so that has been slower than, much slower than I would have hoped to be able to do. But, I mean, the thing is, we need to look at what the evidence base for the local plan shows, so we have done heritage impact assessments, or all of our specific ones, which have been done in, in consultation with Historic England, so we are mindful of the impact on heritage, but what we need to ensure is that any of the allocations have an acceptable, they will have an impact, all development has an impact, but that's mitigated and where appropriate compensatory measures are put in place to protect heritage. So I suppose, in essence, what we're talking about is ensuring that the local plan addresses heritage, and I would say to the board that it, it does, and the evidence supports that.
Thank you. I'd like to take the opportunity to echo what many of the councillors around the table have said, although have I seen your hand councillor Liam?
Thank you, I just, I think I'd first just want to thank all the officers for the time, and obviously over considerable length of time going there, so I think it would be wrong not to support going forward to the next stage of consultation. And it's important, I think, to remember that it's very easy to focus on the areas that are identified for development within the local plan, but it's worth remembering all the areas around Chelmsford that are not included in the plan, over which we have control to, to avoid development there, it may have to come in the future, but I think we should recognise what it protects a local plan, what it says about where there isn't going to be development, and I think that is very important. Without a local plan, we are, as Jeremy said, led by developers, who then can object through secretary of state, and we have no control over getting that protection or that sense of community or anything like that, so I would be supporting this going out to consultation in its second.
Thank you councillor Liam, and it's echoing exactly what I wanted to say, thank you very much for the officers for the time that you've put into this, it's a very detailed report, and we can see there's a great deal of work that's gone into it, I think we're probably ready to cancel the session.
So the recommendations on the first two pages, the first recommendation, there are five recommendations, the first recommendation is agrees that the review of the Chelmsford local plan proceeds to regulation 19 publication as set out in the planning rules, and its subsequent submission to independent examination is made under the transitional arrangements. Recommendation two is the board approves the publication of the Chelmsford Local Plan Pre- Submission Regulation 9 document and the pre-submission integrated impact assessment attached to attachment two and three of this report for public consultation. Recommendation three, that the board notes the preferred options, you said we did feedback, report attached to appendix one and approves it for publication. Recommendation four is to give delegated authority to the director of Sustainable Communities and the consultation, and the cabinet member to make any minor changes that might be required. And the final recommendation is that the board endorses the approach, proposed approach to the local plan pre-submission regulation 19 documentation for consultation arrangements as set out in appendix four, that's who we're going to consult. Thank you, Chair, so I propose all those five recommendations.
And the green sheet amendment as well.
The green sheet amendments, unfortunately I don't have that in front of me.
Thank you, so given the conversation that we've had up until now, I think it'd be helpful to have a vote by show of hand, so we can see very clearly, if we could have a, who's, who's for, who's in agreement with all of the recommendations that have been put forward by councillor Soshin? Yep. Can I please ask for those who are against the recommendations as outlined? A show of hands, grateful for the gallery taking part as well. And can I please have a clear show of hands of those that are abstaining or, or not responding? Thank you. If we can then move on to the next item on the agenda, which is around the draft planning obligations supplementary planning report, which I believe Liz will be presenting.
Thank you, Chair, there is a short presentation, I was just, sorry, don't worry, it's not long. Thank you, Dan. So, good evening members, this is a short presentation just to introduce this item, which is the proposal for us to consult on a draft planning obligations supplementary document, so this is to support the implementation of the regulation 19 local plan, but it's about consulting on that. There we go. So, it's just to provide members with a reminder, we do have an adopted planning obligations supplementary planning document, which I'm going to now refer to as an SPD, otherwise it is a bit of a mouthful, that was adopted after the 2020 local plan, it's, sets out the scope and scale of planning obligations that will apply to different types of development under its thematic, so it's set under different subject themes. The reason for bringing this to committee today and for us to consult on a new draft to that is obviously it's been updated to reflect what's in the regulation 19 pre-submission local plan, and also alongside changes in national policy, and the updates to the evidence-based documents that support that regulation 19 pre-submission local plan. The key one probably in relation to, although there are more than one, but one where there is a direct read across is the preferred options infrastructure delivery plan, which is one of our evidence-based documents that has been published in that suite that Claire had on one of her slides earlier this evening. The planning obligations revised draft also includes and updates some of our planning advice notes, which members will be aware of because they came to this committee prior to publication, and were produced after the adoption, excuse me, of the 2020 local plan, and covered off topics, for example, where national policy changed, so we had one in relation to first homes when they were introduced subsequent to our adoption of our new local plan, provided advice on how we would be treating first homes in the development management process. So some of those planning advice notes, which are still published on our website, are proposed to be updated and included in this new draft planning obligations SPD, to give it added weight where appropriate. The main updates are summarised in the covering report, it is a fairly short report, but they are referenced under the relevant headings for housing, recreation and leisure, environmental mitigation, health and social wellbeing. There is an introduction of two new topic-based themes in the document, one on waste management, so a new section has been added on waste management, I think this is also mentioned earlier on in the presentation because of the, because of our current need for a new waste depot, storage and transfer station, because that's at capacity, and there is also another new section, rather than an updated text, on employments and skills to capture the new requirement in strategic policy S8 as set out in the pre-submission, the regulation 19 pre-submission local plan, which requires employment and skills plans on all strategic scale planning applications of 50 or more homes or employment space providing 2,500 square metres or more, so there are two new sections there as well. Just to provide the context, so what we're obviously asking members to do here today is to approve the document for a consultation, it will be alongside the regulation 19 pre-submission local plan consultation for exactly the same, same six-week period. The reason we're doing this alongside that document is because the planning obligations SPD is the one SPD that probably provides the more supplementary implementation guidance to developers of what will be required in order, you know, through the adoption of the plan, and therefore we want that read across, and we also want a consultation with the, it's a technical consultation with those stakeholders before the document would be submitted as an evidence base in the, alongside the regulation 19 pre-submission local plan, so it would be an evidence base supporting that. After the consultation closes, we would, the intention is to bring the comments, so the main representations and how we propose to address them, even though it would still be a draft document, back to this board for their consideration and input. And then, as I mentioned earlier, the revised consultation draft SPD would be submitted as an evidence-based document supporting the pre-submission local plan, and it would be presented to the inspector on that basis. Just for clarification, it's worth noting that the revised or any final version of the planning obligations SPD at the end of this process would have to be informed by any amendments that were made to the pre-submission local plan by the inspector, and at no point could it be adopted in advance of that pre-submission local plan, so I just wanted to be clear about that. The recommendations on the report are listed on the screen, the final one, we are required to do a consultation for a screening report with statutory bodies on supplementary planning documents to determine whether the draft planning obligations SPD requires a full strategic environmental impact or, and/or habitat regulation assessment, and so that's just asking for, to give, for authority, to give delegated authority to the director of Sustainable Communities in consultation with the cabinet member for a greener Chelmsford to authorise those necessary documents for that to take place alongside at the same time as the public and wider stakeholder consultation on the draft planning obligations SPD. I think that was all Chair, it's relatively self-contained.
Thank you, that's very helpful. Do I have any comments or feedback from the room? No, fantastic, no, just reach for your glasses. If you're ready councillor Soshin?
Thank you, this time we have three recommendations, the first recommendation is the board approves the publication of the draft planning obligations SPD attached to appendix one in line with the regulations. The second one is to delegate authority to the director of Sustainable Communities and with the cabinet member to make any minor changes that might be considered necessary. And the third one is this rather complicated recommendation, which allows the director of Sustainable Communities to consult with certain statutory bodies to, on the screening report to decide whether it needs a full strategic environmental assessment and/or a habitats regulation assessment, I so propose those three recommendations.
Rather than a show of hands, if we could, oh, of course, can I please have a second there? Councillor Pully? If I could have, are we in agreement with the proposals that's set out by councillor Soshin? If I could have, are we in agreement with the proposals that's set out by councillor Soshin and seconded by councillor Pully? Agreed. Thank you very much, thank you for that Liz, that was very helpful. And now we'll move on to the last item on the agenda, which is Dan.
Thank you Chair, this is just an update on the work programme for members, just for noting, it's now got the twenty-five, twenty-six dates now they're set. And some of them are populated, some are just left as to be confirmed for now, but they'll be filled at a later date. It's just if there's any comments on the work programme really. Thank you Chair.
Looks good to me, thank you very much. I think... Noted, absolutely. I think we've reached the end of the meeting, unless there's anything further to go through. Thank you very much for your time today, really appreciate seeing everybody. Have a lovely evening and drive home safe.